Pierce is a one oh seven tandem axle and the Rosenbauer would be a one oh nine tandem axle.
What's the collapse zone on a one oh seven or one, one oh nine?
The collapse zone, it depends on your building.
How far back? Yeah, that's what I'm asking is.
So the building height.
How big of a height does that give us?
Well, you typically go one and a half percent or hundred fifty percent of the height of the building. So if you're a twenty foot building, you'd get set back thirty feet and reach out. Um, and then you have some criteria. If you're closer to the corner, then you can get a little bit closer to the building. Does that answer your question? Kind of, sort of, not really?
Well, yeah, I I was just curious if you were pick picking a hundred and ten. Hundred to a hundred and ten for a collapse.
No, typically they make a seventy five foot, some make a ninety foot. Or they're one, they used to be a one oh five, now they've extended them to a one oh seven or. The other manufacturer Rosenbauer has a one oh nine, they try to one up each other. Unless you start getting into an articulating platform or a really, really, really long truck like that in Asia. You get a little bit higher, but that's not something we're interested in or need at this time.
They're not a platform, they're.
They're just a straight stick. They're not an articulating platform, they're not a bucket truck, they are a straight stick. Um, and I do have some pictures I can pull up of these.
The, the second company that you tweaked. Once it was tweaked, did it meet the same specs as Pierce?
No, still doesn't.
Still short.
What's it missing?
Doesn't have independent front suspension. Let's see, I got my letter here of different things that it um. If you calculated the Rosenbauer, you come up with two hundred cubic feet of space versus the two hundred thirteen, so you lose out on future storage space. It does not have the true independent front suspension. Not only is that a ride comfort, but a safety comfort, um, braking, engine braking or, you know, weight of the vehicle. It also affects the uh cramp angle of the turning radius, the front turning.
Additionally, the cab is bigger on the, on the one that meets the spec by fourteen inches, which is a lot of room when you're, when you're dealing with the. Folks inside that have SCBA's and all their gear and stuff on that or getting it on, that's, that's big.
Another area that's big too is Pierce truly, when they mount their seats and their seat belts, their seat belts are bolted to the chassis of the truck. Rosenbauer bolted to the seat. So you start looking at safety things, little things like that. If you get in an accident. Much like the plane accident, you might still be buckled into your seat, but you're out in the field and that's not something that we want to do.
So chief, when you talk about the difference between an uh, an axle body or a straight stick. You're talking about the axle one, the axle body. Is like the one that you and I saw when we went to the Capitol that day, right? That you pointed out to me. So it has two different pieces that are hooked together.
That would be a tractor drawn aerial device or commonly referred to as a hook and ladder. That is not what we're getting in. It is just a longer truck.
One piece.
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, we are not looking at a tractor drawn aerial device at all. One, they require extra people to operate. To their maintenance nightmare. The ladder size strength is still the same reach, but now you've stretched the vehicle even longer. Those work great for bigger cities that have narrower roads or access issues.
Yeah.
Uh, both manufacturers have brought demo trucks through the area. We've taken them through. Uh, the, the condos to the west, down on Appleseed Lane and all of our narrow, high density housing. Both trucks are able to do, will get through there without any issues.
Oh, good to know.
I have a couple of questions. If we were able to magically write this check today and pay for it, how long before it would be here ready to use?
And it would be magic too.
It would be magic. So the Pierce is estimating a delivery of thirty four to thirty five months from the order date. Three years. Rosenbauer is quoting anywhere from twenty six to twenty eight months. But they're also going a little bit further, so I dare say three years on both.
Okay, my next question is, I know it's not ideal, but with some, sometimes with vehicles of this size and price, you look for used. Is there a chance of picking up one from a bigger city across the country and what kind of price we'll be looking at for that and how long would that last?
So the vehicles have NFPA standards, lifeline, lifetime uh, service expectations on them. Typically, agencies are getting rid of them because they have issues. Um, you might find one. That's used like Provo for five years, but even Provo is now extending them to seven and ten years. Those are also driven harder. Um, they're used more, they're out of warranty. You start having electronic issues and those types of things that result. And so you start looking, is it really worth? Unknown, and where can you find? I know that Lehigh, for example, just purchased a used engine, um, because they can't get an engine after one was crashed a year ago. And it came out of New York City. And so you.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
It's about half of the cost of a new one, but that doesn't have the aerial ladder, those types of things on it as well.
I'm glad you saw that article.
I mean, that's a horrible situation and nobody wants to be in that, but yeah, you, you could find a used one, but I think you also. Like any used vehicle, you can get a good lemon or you can get a good truck.
So what are our options as far as paying for this? Is, is it even within the realm of possibility to find the funding to prepay? To save that almost three hundred thousand or no, almost two hundred thousand dollar?
Yeah, so the answer to that is maybe. So there's, there's some, some. We, we do have some reserve funds that, that have been set aside for this purpose in the fire department fund. That have been there for some time and have grown and shrunk and grown and shrunk as we've done other things like. Other types of equipment have been purchased with that, but we, we do have some funds in there. We also have some funds in, in impact fees that we could pay for that. Um, the, the, the challenge with it is, is that, is that we have, we have to balance things out, right? So the other option is, is that we could bond for it, but if we bond for it, it's likely that we're not going to be able to. Their, their requirement, I think, to, to realize that kind of se- of return is, is uh. Thirty days, like there's no way we're going to get through a bonding series to, to be able to go bond for this. We, we've talked about that and we had that discussion is that the fire truck and the, and the um, new building that we need out, out in Summit Ridge that we're designing now. Uh, that would be bonded for. So that, that kind of takes that out of the realm of possibilities. We could also use revert, reserve funds and, and have a loan between. The, the, the public safety and the, and the general funds, which has been done before in this city to, to be able to help fund that. So there, there's different options that we could do, but you also have to look at other things like right now. Interest rates are such right now that, that we could probably make more money on interest by not paying it off upfront. And just paying the, the payments as we go and continuing to earn the interest because that's where our PTIF accounts are at right now. So. So all of this information is really brand new to me. I've known since about two o'clock that there was a potential discount. So I, my mind has been racing and I've been looking at the, the, the impact fee facilities plan and the impact analysis and our funds and all that kind of stuff. I don't have a complete enough picture, but if we were to use some amount of reserve funds, we likely could pay for it upfront. But if we leave those reserve funds in the PTIF account, it's likely that we're going to continue. Now, now, the other. The other thing that you deal with also is that interest rates may come back down, but they're likely not going to come back down as fast as they went up.
No.
So that, that's a risk that we take as well to where that goes. Cause, cause quite frankly, if I were their, their company that were doing this. I would take our money that we pay them and go put it in a, in a, in an account and earn some money on it, and that's why they're off, able to offer the discount.
Right.
So, so it's, it's really sixes.
Well, the, I, I, the, the options will need to be carefully evaluated.
Yes.
Um, so that the numbers are clear and then brought to the council, um, but. In my opinion, if we're gonna, if we're going to make this kind of investment. I would rather invest in the, the vehicle that closest meets, checks all the boxes. That's my, that's my opinion.
So.
That, that meets as many of the requested specs as possible.
Right. And it's my understanding also that the, 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 the company, the Pierce that meets the spec. Also has state bid, which basically means that, that, you know, that we can just purchase straight through them and.
They're in the pool.
They're in the pool. That's exactly right. So that, that's, that's great because that means they've already done a whole bunch of homework. To, to get in that pool and make it so that we can have that ability to do that. So.
With a three year lead time, we've got three years of budget to fund this.
To fund. The Pierce does also offer say about one point, well, one point seven initial price. You can prepay one year, three hundred or five hundred thousand and they'd give you a discount off that. So you can still save money by paying it over, we want to pay five hundred thousand now, five hundred thousand or five hundred thousand. You'd still get a discount. It just wouldn't be as steep of a discount, but we could also have a little more time to find something.
But that would be, it'd be spread over three years that way.
Yeah, I, I would mention though that on this that there are certain triggers at thirty days, we have to pay ten percent.
Yeah.
So it's a hundred seventy thousand and at, and at the time that they get the chassis. From the ma- from the manufacturer and start building it, then we have to pay another, I think up to fifty percent.
That's the, the Rosenbauer. Once the chassis comes, you can pay.
No, I think it's, I think it's on the other one as well. I think there's triggers there that we do have to make, pay some payments a- along the way. And, and we can, we can, that's correct. We can verify that and bring that back to you again. This is a work session, it's a good discussion. We're not going to decide anything tonight. We're just trying to get some direction from you on what you would like to see us bring back.
Will it fit here or we need that new building for it to go in?
Well, it would fit here. We'd end up moving some apparatus out.
Okay.
So that was one of the questions that Norm presented. If this comes before the new building is built, what would we do with some of our apparatus? Some of those things would have to be temporarily moved or relocated, uh, drained and winterized, if you will, and find an appropriate storage location for them.
What, once it gets here, they'll still be in service until.
We go back to discussion on the, the new building and the bond. Why couldn't we move that building up? He started to bring that up. Why couldn't we bring that, move that building up to? Now do a bond for the truck and the new building and build that now and do a bond now.
So all possibilities, all things that we've talked about.
I know that needs to be looked at. I'm not sure that would save us anything or help, but.
Yeah.
It's always been said to me, there's no, it's never going to be cheaper than now. Going to go up two hundred thousand dollars a year and the building probably more than that.
Right. So, so you're exactly right. There's that, that is a, that is a question, that is something that we can do. One of the things that has kind of come to the forefront over the last few months and the last year. Is that it was likely that the truck would, would be pulled the trigger on that one first because of the lead time that we have and the continued increased cost. We can certainly, uh, we're, as you know, we're going through a, a, a design on the building right now. It's a, it's a. It's a concept design and a site plan so that helps us to understand where we need to go. We can certainly move that forward and continue that, but that would definitely trigger a bond to be able to do that and, and move that forward. So. Again, this is like Art was saying, it's, it's budget, right? So if we, if we start a bond, then that affects our budget next year. Right? And so that's the other thing that we need to look at is where, where's the best use of resources?
So, so does one point seven million.
Sure.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I, I think that's one we need to look at with the other options.
Absolutely.
To see which is going to be better for the city.
Absolutely.
I, I have two questions to go along with this. Um, forty years ago, we set up the, the capital equipment fund for the fire department. What's the balance of that right now?
Yeah, I, it's just north of four hundred thousand dollars right now.
So that takes care of.
That, that can take care of our ten percent and yeah, it can take care of a portion of it. Absolutely.
Okay, so that's sitting there and, and that's where we reside with it. The other question I have is. We're talking the specs of the truck and what, what is included with that, uh, you know, with, with your write-up. Where's the equipment? Is the equipment part of that or is it separate?
The equipment would be separate.
And, and what's the basic cost of all the equipment to outfit a one hundred to one oh five truck?
I dare say with adding some air packs, we would not need extrication equipment because we currently have new stuff.
Does it come with any hose?
No, it, it comes to truck. You can spec it with the hose and add it into this.
So no tools, no ladders, no?
It comes with all the ground ladders. That's the complement of NFPA ground ladders, but no loose equipment, no hoses, no fittings.
No fittings at all?
All the pump fittings that come on it, but no, no nozzles, no nothing other than the aerial master stream nozzle.
Nothing off the panels. What about the, the master stream on the end of the stick?
Stream on the end of the stick is there, yes. It comes with that. It would just not be any of your loose equipment. So, uh, I, I. I asked Provo what they typically spend and they go a little heavy because they can. They're about a hundred to a hundred and twenty five depending on. What the truck is and the price.
Yeah, because I think that's something that needs to be a part of this, even though we probably don't look at it for. Three years out when you need to actually put it in.
Correct.
But those same numbers that you're talking about inflated numbers of equipment purchases will still get you as you go along. Is there a way to uh, look at that?
You can add them to.
The K-marts?
You, you can add them to both manufacturers are willing to preload the truck. But they typically will call your host supplier and then add your service fee on top of that. So if you're going to spend a thousand dollars on hose, they're going to add ten percent.
Are you going to go through the Ellen Curtis or?
We'd end up just going through a local supplier to get it and shop for the best deal to find that instead of. Soul sourcing it out and paying a service fee to them to do our homework for us.
Yeah, and that. You, you also brought up uh, SCBA's that go in there. Is that in addition to the SCBA's that we already have? Are you going to pull them off of the quint?
If you pull the, if you keep all the vehicles, then you need a one per seat in the vehicle. If you're keeping what the ISO recommended. With three engines and one aerial in service in the city, then you would need six additional SCBA's for this.
But three years out from now, before we would see it number one, the quint that we have would already be at uh.
Twenty five.
Twenty six years.
Yeah. So right now we are at the bare minimum. We do not have any spare SCBA's. We bought just enough to get us through where we've added SCBA's onto our ambulances. We don't have any backpacks or uh, reserves. If one goes down, we're short on an apparatus.
What about radios?
Uh, it does not include the radios. It would end up three thousand dollars per truck mounted radio and the portables would come off of that same quint.
What about the light package? Does that come with it?
All the lights, yes.
All, all of them?
All emergency lights and scene lighting and everything are on both trucks.
So nothing has to go back to well and or one of their manufacturers?
Ready to go. All we'd have to do is load the equipment onto it. Um, typically. We buy the radio beforehand and have a program. So when the truck arrives in Salt Lake, they do their inspection. At either the manufacturing representatives will do a detailed inspection. Um, they'll go through and service the truck. They'll actually mount the trucks or the radios in Salt Lake for us. So that when it's delivered here, we can start training on it and start loading it right away.
The one thought that I had, and it's kind of going away from me for a second, but. We need to get it up and outfitted and able to answer all of these questions. I think those numbers need to be put in there, but uh, for equipment, for the pieces that need to be included. So that, you know, we look at the entire package in today's dollars and buffer that in with the cola going forward. The other thing is, um. Geez, why do I keep losing this? The uh, the cost of. The truck itself has got to include all of those bits and pieces that go with it. So we need to make sure that we've included them. God, there's one more thing too. Oh, seats. You said, you said the seats were tied to the chassis, which is great.
And seat belts tied to the, the frame of the chassis, not to the.
And, and even though we bought uh, most of our vehicles with Pierce anyway, most of our frontline, um, but um. When we got the Provo Quint, it only had four seats. Is this six or four?
This has six seats. It was built to serve us now and in the future as well. Um, the, the, the engine from Provo actually had a fridge and another medical cabinet in the back, and so they spec it because they were running two man engines. This one would have the, the driver seat, the captain seat, which is an SCBA compatible seat. And then two SCBA seats in the middle with two fold down seats in the back to seat six.
Driver seats, not SCBA.
It is not.
But the captains is?
Yes.
Okay, so there's five SCBA's in there.
Five SCBA seats in there and one SCBA for the engineer on the outside of the.
So you're looking at one more anyway. Even if you use the old ones and uh, what's the life on those packs?
The bottle is fifteen years without.
What's the pack?
It really depends on how hard it's beat, but you should be able to get fifteen years out of it.
Didn't we just buy those four years ago?
I think it was closer to six years. I'd have to go pull the, the thing.
Getting old, I forget.
When all of his apparatus we could put into a, to a bond, if we did a bond for it, we could certainly put all that apparatus in there. One thing that I would note on a bond. Is that, that right now we're likely at the highest interest rate that we could be at as far as bonds, just like we're earning good interest. Entering into a bond right now may or may not be beneficial. We could always refinance or refund in the, in the public realm is what it's called. It, it, as interest rates go down. We've done that on bonds here in the city in the past. And so we can certainly initiate that. Again, that's why we're here to, to have the discussion on. How we, how you would uh, have us go. What, what may be a good strategy is we use some of the. The reserve funds that he already has, a smaller amount for the ten percent. And then as we get closer to, to um. You know, getting the truck here and needing the, 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 the building to put it in. Then we pull the trigger on a bond in another year or two years, but we could do it tomorrow. You guys, it, it's real. This is all a policy decision on what you would have us do to, to move forward.
This is something that we need to think about. The discussion or the decision still, we're, we're a month away. We're at least two or three discussions away, I hope. But at least we have some skin in the game here that we can deal with and it's not just vapor money.
Yeah, one, one thing about the new, the new building, which is separate from the fire truck, is that we're still going through the conceptual process. So we're still a few months away. From knowing even what some costs on that building will be by the time we get a design and have a, have it estimated. We're still probably three or four months away from that. So. But at the same time, we could be going through a bonding uh, application process and, and see where we're at at that point in time. So at least we've got some funds to be able to pay again, a, a down payment and, and kind of start to rode the wheels and get the P O put in and, and get it moving. I think that's the biggest key right now is because of the lead time that we have, we, we really need to make a decision sooner rather than later, not necessarily today or tomorrow, but. The, the sooner we make it, the better off we're going to be as far as the additional potential costs for. The emissions that'll, that'll go up next year, the year after. The, all of those things are things to take into account. And I think that's the whole point here is. Do we order now? And we're happy to bring it back in two weeks and have another discussion with you about finalizing the numbers and where we could put the. The, the financing and how we could put it together using some, maybe some cash now and, and bonding. You know, within the next, I don't know, six months or whatever. The, the bonding can, can take a little bit of time. I would say you're probably ninety to a hundred and twenty days. Even to get through a bonding process. So.
Are you leaning towards Pierce?
I am because it meets our spec. It's hard to.
What about compatibility and people the, that we're used to working with and everything else?
It's a lot easier to train and stay consistent across the fleet.
Do we, do we have a local rep? You know, we used to use Dan quite a bit and.
Dan is still a Pierce certified guy to help us.
Still in Provo?
He actually retired and then went back to work for Provo and he has his own little business that he does. Um, Sins and Martin bought out what used to be Ross or Superior.
Yeah.
They also have mobile mechanics and their services, great.
How's their turnaround like before? Is it?
It's night and day difference from what it was. Um, they get out, they get it taken care of. We actually sent up engine one forty five, which is our frontline engine. It had a low voltage alarm. We thought it was a voltage regulator. They end up finding a shortage. In a bus bar behind the electrical paneling. They fixed everything, got the electrical, um, issues resolved, fuel gauge working. It came back. We had it for about two weeks and it started coming up and I made a call and they sent a mechanic out that day to resolve the issue. So their customer services.
When, when we got the Quint, that was, you know, as good as shirt pockets. You know, at least the invention of shirt pockets. And uh, there were a lot of good things that came with it, but there was also a lot of. Worry as time progressed. And one of those worries was that Quint was one of the first off the line. And uh, where do we stand with where this is in the design phase and the utilization of? All of the. All of the hydraulics and electronics that have to go through the turntable that we got nailed with last time.
So everything on this truck, one, it's one hundred percent designed and ready to go if we were to pull it. It's all been tested. It's not new generation. Equipment or supplies. When you talk about new generation, the unknowns and that is, that brings up the, the engine, the power plant. Of going to that twenty twenty six standard or twenty twenty eight standard, the engine's not even made. We don't know what the cost will be for that future motor or potential issues. Um, but you know, the Pierce warranty is there and it stands behind it and there's plenty of them out there too.
Can we get a twenty four that goes with it or are you stuck with going to the twenty six because we're three years out for bill?
We, if we locked in now, the problem is they, Pierce typically buys X number of engines and has them. And those numbers are dwindling quickly. They expect to sell out the first week of October of the twenty twenty four motor. So if we wait too long, we're going to be coming back to you with new numbers and unknown numbers because the motors aren't out yet. Which will then push us out a little bit further, estimated probably six to eight months. In addition, waiting for those numbers to come from the engine manufacturing groups.
I know this is going to sound weird, but is it, is it mid ship transfer or is it uh, waterous or have they done away with that or?
So this actually has what they call a puck, which is a pump under cab, which is a PTO driven water pump, two thousand GPM water pump. Believe it or not, the truck would actually be able to have the pump and roll capabilities.
I was, I was going to ask if it could do that.
It can do that.
That's amazing. What is it? Uh, two thousand?
It's a two thousand GPM pump. So a fifteen hundred GPM pump is three thousand dollars cheaper.
Well, no, there's no reason to go down.
You're going to collapse our fire hydrants?
No, as long as they have sufficient pressure, which all the boots have one potential area, we won't collapse the fire hydrants.
Norm mentioned, just said, three to four months to bond. When's the two to three percent raise coming?
They said end of October, first part of November, a three percent increase.
Sooner than the bond would be put together.
This, this price for Pierce is guaranteed till October thirty first or until they run out of those engines. If they run out of those engines before, we're back to the drawing board.
So tha- that's why I was saying we probably would be smart to use some of, some of our cash that we have up front, not all of it maybe, but. Some of that as we go through a bonding process, if that's the, the direction that we choose to go.
To lock in the bid.
Yeah, to lock it in, get the order done, send a P O and get it coming. It does cost us a little bit of cash, costs us ten percent to, to get it going.
But at the same time. Where we have four hundred K, we're still well within that.
Right. And that's why I'm saying.
How to pay for it while we're.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And, and again, over that three years, we're going to continue to have. Um, uh, impact fees coming in as well. Those don't, those don't add up quite as fast as like park impact fees or sewer impact fees. They're. They're quite a bit smaller, but we will still have some revenue coming in from that that will help us over that period of time.
Can we put this on the agenda for the next meeting? And if we have to table it, we will, but at least we'll have some figures and. We'll have an opportunity to make a decision if we want to.
Absolutely. That's, that's why we're here is to just kind of bring you up to speed on the, all the great work that Ryan's done with getting the bids and putting the, the. Specs out and all that kind of stuff. We're happy to bring it back to you next two weeks from now and just. See where we can go and, and by that time we will have some more time to look at, at financing and where we go and what we can come up with and. I'll have some discussion also with the bond council, with our bond council and Zion's bank as far as bonding and. Knowing that we're a ways out on the building and that kind of thing, figure out where we go with that and have some more information for you there.
You can guess on the price of that building.
Uh, yeah, I can guess at it, but right now guessing at prices of buildings, I am not.
But you can get an idea as well.
Yeah, I, I would imagine that you're going to be five to six million dollars on that building at, at, yeah.
Is it, is this truck being built in Wisconsin or in Florida?
In Appleton, Wisconsin.
I think you went and say Wisconsin.
My mom would say that.
And again, I, I've read, well, the, the Pierce spec is a little, almost two hundred pages. So when I'm into it, if I get confused.
Well, Mayor, can we have this on the agenda next time then?
I think we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll work on getting some numbers of equipment, what today's cost would be with new hoes and things like that. I can. Try to put together, get a list from Provo and start sending it out to my suppliers and have them bid it now.
Is, is that on the server so I could even take a look at it? I, I've tried to. Make sure that I didn't get in there and stick my nose in, but I would really like to look.
I can send them both to you. I can figure out which server you want them on and I can put them there or I can email them to all of you.
There, there's a lot of information.
Yeah, I, I think someplace where we could just access it. I, I want to read it just so that I know.
You don't sleep either, huh? You don't sleep at night either, huh?
Not much. I'm kind of like Old Joe, you, you know?
So yeah, I'll send it to you. There, there's nothing I'm afraid to share, so.
No, I, I just want to make sure and uh, this is a big investment.
It's a very big investment. We want to do it right the first time and not regret our decision.
You know, that, I do want to back up and say, when we worked with Coy and bought the Quint. That was, that was a godsend to Santa Quinn and it was a time when a, a fire chief. Opened up an opportunity for us and those kind of days and times and abilities are kind of way beyond us.
Yeah.
And uh, we not only got it for a pretty good price, they just don't have the, that kind of turnover anywhere. Even, even looking at rebuilds and other things, it's, it worries me. I, I really would like to invest in this city the way it needs to be. Even even looking at rebuilds and other things, it's it worries me. I I really would like to invest in this city the way it needs to be.
Yeah, it's like you say, you can get good apparatus used, you can get faulty ones. Um, a- and it's just one of those. I would rather spend a little bit more upfront and know that what we're getting is what we want and it has the backing of the warranty, the training. And the service behind it. That was one of the things when our two thousand and one, the Quint had um, the last time we had to rebuild the ladder. They were sourcing parts on eBay for some of it because they couldn't find them at the time.
I asked you this question the other day, so tell these guys what you told me. Um, when did we need this truck?
Six years ago. Uh, and this is something that's not new. I mean, if you were here four years ago when I came on. I was asking for it every year and it's it started at one point one and now we're at one point seven without any discounts. So every year it does go up. And next year, you're going to see that two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollar increase bare minimum, I believe.
We were afraid of even breaking the one million mark, you know, six years ago.
Now we're almost to two.
I've asked you often, what do we do about the three story building on Main Street?
It's sprinkler. Thank goodness.
Maybe you can get the Bronto and bring it down because we've got power lines too.
Yeah, so those are the things and I'm happy to answer any other questions. If you have thoughts, concerns, please let me know. I will say ordering an ambulance is a lot easier than ordering a fire truck.
I just wanted to know specs for myself.
I'll send them to you. I'll send them to everyone. Uh, actually, I'll just send them to Norm and Norm can forward them to the council in one email if you want.
I think he'll just give us a link so we can look on the. I don't think it's good to throw that all over the place.
I can work with him. He can put it on the server and then you can access it from there.
Any other questions for Ryan? We're pretty good. Okay, we'll put it on on agenda in October. And is that the fifth?
Third.
It'll be the third of October, huh? Ryan, we got a lot of work to do.
Alright.
Let me rephrase that. You got a lot of work to do. And so do I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Norm, why don't we get a quick report on the lobbying efforts?
Sure. Uh, so Mayor Council at the request of uh council members and the mayor, he wanted to to have us take a look at and just kind of see where we're at with our lobbying efforts if you. I'll try and make this a little bit bigger without exploding it too much, so watch out as it hits you in the head. Um, but essentially we've we've spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the last, well, let me rephrase that, almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have. We have a little bit more of a less than a year on the second contract that we have with MAG for the additional services. Um, so by July of next year, we will have spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on lobbying services. And have have uh got a twenty-seven to one return on our investment. Now, some of that is the four million dollars that the state put together for the environmental on the on the interchange. We we won't see that money. It's not our money, but it does absolutely and certainly benefit Santa Quinn City to the rebuild of the of the uh interchange. Um, they helped us get the the state grant for the uh recreation grant that we got for the restaurants and other things at at Prospector View. They also helped us get the one point seven million dollars, one point six nine million dollars on the metering grant. Art, we have it. It's on the agenda tonight.
I saw it. I read it.
So this is something that that Art has been passionate about for the last year and a half and and duly duly noted. Um, I I would say that that in my estimation, without our lobbying efforts, that money would not have come to fruition because they went and they went actually back to the. To the legislature and helped the legislature see that they had some flaws in how they were looking at it and the legislature then directed staff, state staff. To go back and relook at it and that's where this money is coming from. So um. You may recall a year ago, Art, we were having the same conversation that we don't qualify. Well, now we qualify and we've got one point seven million dollars to help us replace twenty-six hundred. Uh, pressure irrigation meters that are more than ten years old and are are wearing out. Most of them are fifteen plus years old, actually.
This is for P I, right?
This is for the pressure irrigation. That is correct. Yep.
There are there are other funds that we've been able to get that we were working on that uh are a part of that, but these are the ones that are directly related to.
Right, right. I I would also say that that one point seven million dollars actually helps us get con- um compliant with state code in twenty thirty. Which is to have all of our meters on a real time uh portal for all of our customers. So sometime in the next two years, we will have. All of our customers, you as customers, will be able to log in and go, wow, how come my meter, how come my water usage is so high? I might have a leak or something like that. You you'll be able to go in and see real time data on on a daily basis to go look at at water usage for outdoor and indoor usage. That's actually mandated by the state by twenty thirty and we will be compliant far before that. This this helps us to get there though. There's. If I remember right, there's two towers. They're they're probably much like cell towers that will be put up throughout the city. That will help us to be able to read meters that right now we drive around with a with a radio and and on top of the truck. Down every street and pick up all the all of the uh meter reads. A- a- in the future, when this is all done, said and done. Then we'll be able to read that and it'll automatically just come to the utility billing office. Uh, without even having to drive a truck around. We may have to check a few meters here and there. If we miss something or something seems awry, we'll we'll go out and and. Check on things that we may think have a problem, but for the most part, this will be all real time metering within the next two years. Which is fantastic. It helps people to to conserve water and and be mindful of, again, if there's leaks or other things like that. So. Going going back to the to the lobbying services, um, we we are a twenty-seven to one ratio on on. Return on investment, as it were. Now, we're not a business and we don't necessarily deal on return on investment, but. This this uh will give you an idea of how much benefit Santa Quinn has had from having the lobbying efforts that have been already put forth. I I would note that down at the bottom there, you'll see that that um there are other things that we can go after and have our lobbyists help us with. We've already been in contact with them and had a kind of a debriefing and a briefing meeting on where we wanna go next year and one of the the next things to. To talk about is actual funding for construction of the interchange. That's absolutely huge. That is. The the E A will be done over the next uh year and a half or so, but. In the meantime, we can still have our lobbyists help us with with going and getting funds for the actual reconstruct to to reconstruct the interchange.
And and we've been talking about this already, so we've got things lining up. For uh work that we're gonna be doing, not only now, up to legislative session and throughout, so.
I'm I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about that or concerns.
That's helpful. I asked about that two weeks ago, so I appreciate the update.
Yeah, absolutely. I I think it's, you know, it's it's, I think it's something that's been helpful and beneficial for our residents, absolutely.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, Ryan, do you wanna talk about the food truck discussion? No, we'll do it. We met with a with vendor that has a new truck and is ready to go. State law allows allows a vendor. To uh go on any public street that has parking and open up business. Um, I'm not sure how everything is judged out of there, where the billing points come from, what's. What guarantee you get with taxes and I I don't even know if that applies.
And I'll speak to it here in a little bit.
Okay, so so we met with a vendor and and we already have vendors that are here. We have some that just show up and. Hold cod sales and everything else, but uh this one in particular does some incredible barbecue. And uh I kinda like him anyway. I I'd go buy his stuff every night. That's the sad part about it. I really didn't have an answer for him. He knows the law. He knows there are things that are available, but we talked about. Where can he set up? Because that's what he wanted to know when he sat down with us. We threw a few things out. Well, what about this and what about that? But we knew that we would have to talk tonight and say, okay, how do you guys feel about it? Now, there's a couple of other things that came up. Do you wanna?
Yeah, so I I got state code up and frankly, state code is is pretty short and sweet on on this topic. And there's a couple of things that I learned and and I think can clarify our understanding of of food truck regulations. But what what the the mayor is is hinting at is uh, you know, this this particular gentleman who's who's interested in. In having his food truck here in town, it's hard for him to know where to put it in in a legal way, in a way that's not gonna be impactful to other businesses. Uh, to the city. He wants to be in compliance, which is, you know, a lot of kudos to him for for doing that. Uh, we we talked about a couple of ideas, a couple. Uh, properties that, you know, maybe he could seek some permission uh to do. Uh, but it it led to a a thought about uh particularly uh. City property, wh- where it might be able to work and particularly we talked about Centennial Park. Uh, or maybe some other property that the city owns and and exploring those ideas and obviously that would be a policy decision of of. Of allowing for a specific uh city-owned property to to maybe allow for food trucks to be there on, you know, a regular basis. Uh, but to to be- before we talk too much about that, to give you some understanding of of state code, I mean, I'm tempted to just read it. It's really not that long. Uh, but essentially, you know, the mayor alluded to public right of way. Uh, well, uh, let me just read it. So a political subdivision may not. Entirely or constructively prohibit mobile businesses in a zone in which a food establishment is a permitted or conditional use. So we cannot ban food trucks in our commercial zones.
Not that we're trying to.
Right, right. Two, prohibit the operation of a food truck within a given distance of a restaurant. Three, restrict the total number of days a mobile business may operate within the political subdivision during a calendar year. And if if. For the public who might be watching, a political subdivision is essentially in our case, the city. Four, require a mobile business to A provide to the political subdivision. One, a site plan for each location in which a mobile business operates in the public right of way. If the political subdivision permits mobile businesses in the public right of way. So. If the city wanted to allow for food trucks to to operate in the public right of way, then we we wouldn't be able to uh. To to say no wherever wherever that is. Uh, you know, it could be in front of other businesses or that sort of thing, but that was my understanding, but I I. I've kind of learned that it looks like the city, in this case, the the political subdivision permits uh. Must permit the mobile businesses to operate in the in that public right of way. So there is a little bit of of uh discretion that the city has. Uh, also required uh may not require a bit a mobile business to provide to the political subdivision the date, time or duration. That a mobile business will operate within the political subdivision or obtain and pay for a land use permit for each location in time during which a mobile business operates. Um, and then finally, a political subdivision may not. Um, if a mobile business has the consent of a private property owner to operate on the property. May not limit the number of days a mobile business may operate on that private property, require the mobile business provide to this the. Political subdivision or keep on file in the mobile business, the private property owner's written consent. Or require a site plan for the operation of the mobile business on the private property where the mobile business operates in the same location for less than ten ten hours per week. Per week. So this is state legislation uh that's that's come in the past several years and it's it's been. Uh, amended a couple of times since then and really it's it's trying to, I think the state is trying to have uh. Kind of a broad understanding of what cities can and can't do with with these. Now, that's the state regulations and and. Speaking specifically, you know, and and we have legal counsel here that can help us, but city owns. You know, property and 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 owns their park. Um, to me, it doesn't, it. I don't see why the city wouldn't be able to, even with a specific park, like for instance, maybe suggestion is at Centennial Park. We specifically allow for food trucks on the north uh side of that park where that's where's where there's. Where there is a really wide uh gravel shoulder. We have the pavilion there uh with lots of seats. I mean, that that's that's a place where we have the hometown market during the summer. Uh, there's, you know, once a week they have the Meals on Wheels that's there. It it kind of makes sense, you know, it's not too far away from from some commercial on Main Street anyways. Um, but with those ideas, we told this gentleman that we we don't really have a definitive answer for you, but this is certainly something that we can present to the council. And just see what their thoughts are and and see if there's there's um, you know, a way that the 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 city could could help out, not just this gentleman. But really, all food trucks that that may want to have a place to to operate their business. So. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have uh about state code. Obviously Brett can chime in as well on on interpretation of this, but. Really, that's that's the information that hopefully can facilitate.
I think it'd be good to know that we talked to him about who have you talked with. You know, he'd talked with Macy's. And, you know, they they thought it was nice that they that he had stopped by there, but. They have other businesses that uh they felt would be encumbered by. The presence of of uh another food truck, you know, and you could see their reasoning on that. Um, there's reasons he doesn't want to go to other properties that are around because it would bring up that same kind of feeling. And so he asked us, what's available? What, where could I go that I don't really? Rub someone the wrong way and uh that's why we threw out, gosh, could we think about? Going to the north side of Centennial Park. Um, one other place I threw out, which may have been silly, but was. What about the north side of the library? That's a weed patch that we don't even use. That uh you could back one in there and have access and people wouldn't be in the middle of the road trying to order barbecue.
That's gonna start to be used though for the community garden.
Oh, that's right.
The far west side.
But not the north?
No, the far west side by the fence only.
So that's the only spot? Okay.
Yeah, that was the only spot that I'm aware of.
Just wanna, before a decision's made, I just would wanna confirm with John Bradley.
Well, that's that was the map we gave him.
Space, okay.
Yeah, this, I mean, there's pros and cons to a couple of different areas. I mean, that that is a an unused spot, but there, you know, it's a little. There's not picnic tables like there is at Centennial Park where where people could sit at and.
I mean, we've talked for a long time about trying to have a food truck Friday or trying to get more. Food trucks to come to the concerts in the park during the summer. Um, and so I love the idea. I um, I think that if there were. Um, multiple trucks there on the same day at the north end of the park, it would increase business for all of the trucks. That showed up. I think that for one, if if one is parked there and we wanna allow that, I'm I'm fine with that. Um, it would just be hard to for them to get the word out or have street traffic and things like that because they're not right on Main Street, but.
You know, some of those people get a following and they just go. And all of a sudden, people are there.
Yeah, on social media and yeah, people follow them around wherever they're gonna be that particular day. So. If they if they have that and they're using social media in that way to their advantage, I'm fine with that. Um, I still think that it would be okay if we looked at a a food truck Friday and. Just invited lots of different food trucks to come.
He's talking about multiple days a week. Not just a Friday. He's talking about wanting to be here as often as possible, but take it home every night. And and that's part of the reason, don't pull down and set it up.
Yeah, that's that's on private property and you know, obviously that's that could be an option there, but I think sometimes the food trucks are, they're. To this guy's credit, he's he's sensitive that he doesn't want to kind of infringe on on what they've got going on that property, but. If there was more kind of a community place where they could do it, then then there's an understanding that it's not just. You know, someone who's who's kind of claimed some turf on on and worked it out with a private property.
Get a couple of buildings on industrial park, that'd probably be a good spot for food trucks too.
Well, it could be, but right now it's.
Well, and again, those kind of property owners, they they could allow that to to be on their property.
And as long as we're following state code and we offer the same thing to any other food truck owner. That approaches us, then that's fine. I don't know if we would ever reach a point where we're out of space. And so if somebody else approaches us, we we don't have any more space, I guess. Future, future leaders will have to deal with that when the time comes.
I think the thought there is the north side of Centennial Park, that's a pretty good distance. Uh, I'd be shocked if that ever gets to where it's completely full all the time. So it's it, I think it gives ample space for a number of food trucks to come there. It could create a little bit of synergy in the park and that sort of thing. It's. It's already right there on the edge of of a commercial zone anyways, so. Again, this is an idea, no no actions needed today, but if it's an an idea that that you you'd like to consider, then we can kind of, you know. Explore it more, put some some uh language together and and see how it looks.
Just maybe one concern, there's an elementary school there and there's gonna be traffic really bad there three times a day. Um, I don't know how that would interfere, but maybe. Um I don't know how that would interfere, but maybe we look into that, cuz you add several more cars there during when kindergarten pickup is or whatever. That may be an issue even with one or two trucks, let alone like ten up there.
Right. And may maybe for the time being, it's it's kind of from the pavilion to the the northeast corner, cuz that's where a there's a lot of gravel there to park.
Yeah.
You get any more west of that, there's the grass is closer to the pavement and it's a little bit tighter to 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 park a food truck there, but I don't know, maybe maybe we do that and it's it's a first come, first served. It's it's not that, you know, everybody, you know, can come. It's it's here's the space that we've allotted and and as long as there's space there for 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 someone to, you know, to be there, then then it's a first come, first served.
Yeah.
It's kind of kind of kind of like anything else we do with our parks, you know, it's not not every not everybody has a right to to play on the baseball field at the same time. Sometimes you need to take turns and there's only limited space to to, you know, to use it.
The other thing is there's timeframe, like a lot of those that come into town don't come in till four thirty, five o'clock. That's after school anyway.
Isn't there some government agency that comes in s- in the summer or wherever and provides breakfast or lunch for underprivileged?
That's the meals on wheels.
That's.
Okay.
Yeah, the um, well, the meals on wheels is for senior citizens.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
This is the food bank that offers offers free meals to children.
In the summer?
Any child under eighteen um can go get a free meal um Monday through Friday during the summer.
When the school's out?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to be sensitive to that too.
And that's where they set up is right there by the pavilion.
Yep, that's a good point. May maybe we we look at that, but again, this is a big idea if if you're opposed to it, let us know. If if you're open minded to it, then then we could maybe explore putting together uh some language for you to consider.
Uh I would like to suggest that we go ahead and put it on the agenda for some possible action for that first week in October.
So if this is gonna happen through an ordinance, then it would have to go to, is is it land use? Would it have to go to planning commission? It it's likely not, we we would need to look into that.
Yeah.
And make sure that we're just following the right process. Uh to me, it it sounds like it would be an ordinance change. And because of that, it would likely need to go to planning commission first.
All right, that's fine. Do we need to direct them with information or just with what we've had off of this?
Give me a head nod, we'll initiate the process and and set up a public hearing and and have the planning commission review this and and uh and give you a recommendation.
Sound good?
All right, yeah.
Okay.
I like the idea.
The nod of the head.
Nod received.
Move on. Uh do you wanna go over upcoming agenda? We got about thirty seconds.
Sure. I I we can do that, you bet. So upcoming agenda items on the regular meeting, uh Mayor and Council are, we've got bills. Uh recognition of Wayland Pruitt as a one of our longtime uh uh volunteers for our Orchard Days Car Show. That's been handed off to somebody else and Shawna Joe will will honor Wayland this evening. Uh Resolution oh five is uh the agreement to for the to receive the uh the secondary metering grant funds of one point nine, one point six nine million. Resolution oh six is the Hells Development Agreement that you're familiar with. I will note on that one that that the agreement is in the the packet, but the the exhibits didn't make it in there. We'll show them tonight and if it gets approved, then you'll know what you're looking at and what would be incorporated in there. We apologize for missing that. Uh following that, depending on what happens with oh with Resolution oh six, then ordinance oh one could could potentially would would be considered and and that would be the rezone of that same property that the Hells Development Agreement would be upon.
Is that in the right order or should the rezone be considered first?
No, it's in the right order.
It is in the right order, that's correct. Yeah, the rezone is contingent upon them actually purchasing the property. And then a need to go into a C D R A for the item that we talked about previously where um we have a a change order coming for some asphalt. Uh expansion of the asphalt that we'll be doing on the overlay for Summer Ridge Parkway and we'll have that discussion. And then we can have reports and then there will be a need for an executive session on um reasonably imminent litigation and or purchase exchange or lease of real property.
Sound good? Then entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.